Welcome everyone to the City of Middletown Planning Board Meeting, June 7, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a little housekeeping first for our transcriptionist. All board members are present. Also present is Mr. Atkins, our fire inspector, Mr. Welts, our building inspector, Mr. Krogan, planning board attorney. Okay, on to the agenda. First on the agenda is, and I should make a statement first, that anybody here this evening is first time here. First time applicant appearances are considered a preliminary hearing, and the planning board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight.
Approval of May.
Approval of those. Next on the agenda is approval of May the 3, 2023 minutes. I need a motion. Ms. Witt, second. Mr. Madden, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is 9 to 29 Canal Street. This is for a six-month extension of their approval. This is from Jonathan Lee to Martina, 9 to 29 Canal Street. The reason for the extension is that the original use for the permit has been revisited, and the current owners were not 100% sure that they will be moving forward with that use. They wanted to have the extension so they can have the time, or have some time, to continue or to repurpose a new use. So that is our extension. I need a motion to accept.
So just before we do that, so the board's aware, the building was sold, there is new owners, so the site plan goes to the new owner, so they're just looking it over to see what they want to do, if they want to keep with that plan or not.
I need a motion to accept extension letter. Ms. Houston, second. Mr. Higby, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're going to just momentarily skip over 40 North Street. The gentleman forgot his mailings, he ran home to pick them up. He'll be back. Next on the agenda is 8 to 10 East Main Street Flower Art Shop. Please step forward, present your application. Go up to the microphone, please. Yes. State your name for the record.
My name?
Your name?
Hyun Kim.
And what you plan on doing?
Flower shop.
Okay, very succinct. All right. So Ms. Two, we have the mailings?
Yes.
Good. In that case, we're going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing?
Nothing in writing.
Anyone on the telephone?
No.
Okay. We're going to open the public hearing. Again, the board have any comments, concerns?
Will you be, you are part of Da Tang or separate?
Separate.
Separate. Thank you.
And you're selling live plants?
Fresh flowers and gift.
And what are your hours of operation?
9 to 8.
9:00 AM to 8:00 PM? 9:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night?
Right.
Monday through?
Sunday.
Sunday, okay, we're just, yeah, I'm just verifying, because sometimes they change even from the application. Monday through Sunday. Any other questions from the board?
Just the applicant is aware you can't sell marijuana plants.
Go back to the public one more time. Anyone wishing to step forward, speak on this application? Going to close the public hearing. I'll give the board one more chance. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay. On the resolution for 8 to 10 East Main Street Flower Art Shop. Hours from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York if applicable. If throughout the process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables to an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of the special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Basically, if you don't get started with your shop within the next six months, you need to come back to us to extend your approval. Okay? Do you understand that?
Not really.
Okay. If for some reason you don't open your shop in the next six months, okay, whatever might happen, you need to come back to the board to extend your approval. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Whereas, this application is located in the DMU zone. Therefore, applicants must submit and receive approval from the Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2 Collection, Section 407-3 Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. Therefore, applicants must receive approval from the Architectural Review Board on all facade work, exterior work, and in general, general work, and exterior signage. Any sign that you plan on putting on your facade to advertise your business, you need to go to the Architectural Review Board for approval of that sign. Okay? You see Maria Bruni for that, all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And therefore, the planning board will waive parking regulations. All right? Also, anything submitted within the application will become part of the record, and the applicant will follow through on. All right? I need a motion. Ms. Houston, second. Mr. Britto, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
I thought I did, didn't I? Just for the record, make sure I close the public hearing on that application. Next on the agenda, 20 to 26 Main Street Apparel Retail Tailoring Alteration Space. How you doing this evening?
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Good. Please state your name for the record.
Zachary Fuller.
And what do you plan on doing?
It's menswear, women's apparel, retail space, tailoring alterations, as you said.
Ms. Two, Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
I think she stepped out, but I did give her my mailings.
All right, give her a second. We need the mailing so we can proceed.
Do we need something from the property owner as well? Just curious, since there's a time lag.
For which one?
For any applicant. Do we have to have a statement if it's not owned by the property?
Should be an owner's endorsement.
Okay.
Yep. While we're waiting, Mr. Fuller, are you in any relation to Fuller's Men Shop of many years ago, or?
No, different spelling.
Oh, okay.
F-U-L-L-E-R.
Sorry. Just phonetically in my brain.
Yeah.
It would be a good guess.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. So Ms. Two, we have the mailings. Ms. Two would have told me already if we had something in writing or somebody on the phone, so let's proceed. We're going to open the public hearing. Anyone present this evening wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. As I said, we'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Ms. Witt?
Hours of operation and days of operation?
Yes, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturday and Sunday, appointment only.
Okay. Anyone else? It's in the DMU area? Back to the public. Anyone wishing to, here wishing to speak on the application, please step forward. Okay, Ms. Two, just for the record, we had nothing in writing?
Nobody.
Nobody on the telephone?
No.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to close the public hearing. Go through the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay, fine. On 20 to 26 West Main Street Apparel Retail Tailoring Alteration Space. Hours of operation, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Saturday and Sunday, appointment only. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the City of Orange, or the County of Orange, and the State of New York if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables to an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas, pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of granting of the special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. In other words, if you don't open your shop in six months, come back and extend your approval.
That's it.
Whereas, the application is located in the DMU zone. Therefore, applicants must submit and receive approval from the Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2 Collection, Section 407-3 Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. Therefore, applicants must receive approval from the Architectural Review Board on all facade work, all exterior work, and exterior signage. Any sign you plan on putting on the outside of your building needs to go through the Architectural Review Board. Anything you plan to do on your facade of your building also to the Architectural Review Board. Okay? See Maria Bruni. Okay? Therefore, and the planning board will waive parking regulations, and anything within your application submitted will also become part of that, this resolution. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. McCormick, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck, sir.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Two. I see 40 North Street is back. Please step forward.
Good evening to all.
Good evening. Your name, please?
Juan Avalos.
And what you plan on doing?
I plan on extending my restaurant to the second floor as a large gathering party room for restaurant use.
Okay, fantastic. We're going to, Ms. Two, we have the mailings? Anyone on the phone? And nothing in writing? Going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay, we'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Mr. Chairman, are we approving the whole building?
I believe that was the intent.
First and second floor, then being eating and drinking?
That is correct.
And then third floor office?
Correct. That was our goal, right?
Yes, sir.
Because somewhere in the past, something slipped through the cracks.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How long have you been in business in that location?
16 years this year in July.
So in reality, you're just continuing on the first floor the way you have for the past 16 years. Second floor, you're adding for parties or gatherings?
Yes, like, for example, if, pardon my interruption, if we have a large gathering, let's say 20 people, 20 individuals that come in and they want to dine in, we shift them to the second floor, as opposed to halting operations on the first floor.
Got it. And what's your hours of operation?
We operate from 11 to 8:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, except Wednesday I'm closed, and Friday and Saturday, summer hours are 11 to 9:00 PM, Friday and Saturday.
And Sunday?
Sunday, we close at 8:00.
That would be the 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and that's Sunday, what day are you closed?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Now, you mentioned summer hours. Do you have, are they longer than your winter hours?
Yes, they are, because it's.
That's fine. Now, because I want to give you the longer of the hours in your application.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are you still closed on Wednesday for your regular, like, your regular hours, not summer hours?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the third floor is just an office? It's not an apartment?
It's just an office. It was, to my knowledge, used before, like, in the 80s or something like that, as an apartment, but not anymore.
So those offices are for your, your purposes only?
Yes.
Okay.
And my two daughters, which they run around.
But they're business, they're your business-oriented offices?
Yes.
Anyone else from the board? Yes, Mr. Atkins.
So on the second floor, that's just going to be an extension of your restaurant. Somebody makes reservations for, you know, 16 people. You're not renting that out as an event space for birthday parties? Nothing like, just as an extension?
Just an extension or?
Want that to be very clear?
I will.
That it's not going to be an event space?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Any other concerns?
No, I've been there a few times. The building's great, but we just want to clarify it's not going to be an event.
No, no, no.
I'll state it in resolution. If I don't get it right, let me know. We'll make sure we get it right. Back to the public. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application? We're going to close the public hearing. Anyone from the board have any questions, comments, or concerns? Anymore? Another shot at it? No.
Quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Your concern was him renting the space out to someone else's use, as opposed to him, like, he should have the ability to cater, you know, rehearsal party or something. Yes or no?
Correct. Yeah, I'm talking about renting it out for a birthday party where they're serving things they shouldn't be serving, stuff like that. We've had those problems in the past, not necessarily at your place, but.
Thank you.
So any events that take place there, he's in charge of. He's holding the event, so to speak.
Hosting it.
Hosting the event.
Yes, my staff will cook, and so would I, and we will shift the food upstairs. Based on your approval, I will file the permits required for the, for the Health Department to, to extend our use to the second floor.
Yep. Okay, Ms. Madden, answer your question.
Thank you.
And you have no potential that you might open on Wednesday someday? Like, should we keep business hours on Wednesday in case?
Yes, sir. I'm actually thinking of that because of the, the business trends.
Exactly.
A lot of people have told me to lower my price on Taco Tuesday, quote unquote. I'd rather close because my food is high-quality, high-end Mexican food, so it's, it's not profitable to pay the bills if I lower my, my overhead on Tuesday, so I might switch it to Wednesday.
So we should keep it seven days and then?
Yeah, just, just to make sure, and of course, all the uncertainty that has happened since our magic virus here has kept us on our, on our toes, so, but we're still triumphing, thank God.
So with your approval, you'll be open Monday through Sunday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That'll cover all your days and all your hours that you have previously stated?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this way you can't go wrong. You want to close, you close anytime you want.
Yes, sir, based on health.
Correct. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, we'll try to get this in a resolution. Resolution for 40 North Street, an eating and drinking establishment and offices. This resolution is actually the extension of the first floor eating and drinking establishment to the second floor, which will pertain only to your business, and the third floor will be for offices only pertaining to your business. Is that okay, Mr. Atkins, referring to the first and second floor extension?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York if applicable. Obviously, the Health Department will be involved in that decision if you need be, okay? In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables to an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas, pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of the special use permit, such special use permit will be null and void. I think you understand that? If you don't move to the second and third floor, you'll have to come back for approval within six months.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If, okay, whereas, this application is located in the DMU zone. Therefore, applicants must submit and receive approval from the Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2 Collection, Section 407-3 Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. Therefore, applicants must receive approval from the Architectural Review Board on all facade work, all exterior work, and exterior signage. I don't know if you're going to change in your facade or your signage. Again, you know, you need to go to the Architectural Review Board. Okay?
I understand.
Great. And therefore, the planning board will waive parking regulations. Okay, I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Britto, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to be clear that we're giving him the approval on the first floor for eating and drinking. Second floor is hosting events by the owner of the first floor only. But since we're doing the whole building now, it has to be eating and drinking establishment on the first floor.
Right. Isn't that what we did? Eating, drinking on the first floor and second floor.
Yeah, you had said second floor extension of first floor, but he actually never had the approval on the first floor.
But wouldn't he have eating and drinking on the second floor? Like, what if he has, what if he has 20 tables of four? Can he use the second floor?
He can, but the thing was, he didn't have the approval in the beginning.
It's kind of a strange situation. He's owned the business for 16 years.
But he doesn't want to just do large groups there. He may want to do tables of four or something.
There was never approval for the first floor.
Okay.
Way back when, he never had approval for an eating and drinking establishment on the first floor. So when he came to us for the second floor approval, that's when we realized he never had approval for the building. So he really went through the whole process to do the whole building. We're not, we're not trying to impede him.
No, no, I know.
Carrying his business to the second floor.
Okay?
Yes, we have all the permits, but.
You're good. It's just a matter of.
Semantics.
Technically, you're making it official.
No problem.
After 16 years, thank you.
[laughing].
All right, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, 74 to 82 Irwin Avenue Childcare Facility.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
This applicant is someone who I actually find near and dear to my heart, and I happen to have been her teacher when she was a little girl, and have watched her turn into an amazing businesswoman. However, as a representative elected for, by the Board of Education and, or by the community to be on Board of Trustee, and I don't want to impede her ability to apply for universal pre-K, so therefore, I'll be recusing myself for this application.
Okay.
Good evening.
That's fine. Please state your name for the record.
Nicole Perata.
And what you plan on doing?
I'm looking to do a infant and toddler childcare program.
Okay. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings? All right, do we have anyone on the telephone? Anything in writing? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay, I'm going to go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Just so the board is aware, they did change the zoning. I believe we have the resolution.
I do. I can read it into the record. This is from the City of Middletown Common Council. Resolution to amend the city code to include daycares in the UR3 zoning district. Whereas, the City of Middletown has presented with a proposal for a child daycare facility in the UR3 zoning district, which is abutted on the northwestern side by Irwin Avenue and on its northeastern side by Wisner Avenue. And whereas, this zoning district has, also abuts the facilities and playgrounds associated with the Twin Towers Middle School, and whereas, the mayor and economic development director are recommending rezoning this particular UR3 district to allow for child daycare facilities. Now, therefore, it is to be resolved and be ordained by the common council of the City of Middletown as follows. Section 1, the code of the City of Middletown, New York, Chapter 123, zoning is adopted March 27, 1967, and amended, be and hereby further amended by adding a new paragraph 10 to subsection C, uses requiring issuances of special use permit and site plan approval by the planning board to read as follows. Subsection 10, child daycare facility provided that such facility, A, is licensed by the state of New York, B, contains at least 3,000 square feet of usable floor space, C, provides an outside play area for, of at least 600 square feet, and D, provides an off-street drop-off area for such children to avoid impacting street traffic in the area. Section 2, this ordinance shall take immediately, take effect immediately.
And what's the date of that, Mr. Chairman?
May 16, 2023.
Thank you. And I imagine the applicant meets all the requirements as set forth in the resolution?
That is our assumption. That is our assumption. Okay. Any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Witt.
I noticed on your sheet that you gave to us about your hours of operation, they differ from what's on the blueprint in front of me. So can you just verify where your days of operation and employees are?
Could you have your engineer just introduce himself for the record, please?
Oh, Chessori Rotondo, I'm sorry. Okay, so number of employees is 10 to 12.
And then?
Days, hours of operations is six, I believe it's six?
6:50.
50 AM to 6:00 PM.
So I'm just letting everyone know, just for the record, that the letter that's in front of us dated May 18 to our clerk, has your hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 6:00, and then you list that you're going to have a total of six employees. So that's why I was asking, like, what, what are you planning on doing?
My intention is from 6:50 AM to 6:00 PM with 10 to 12 employees.
Okay. Thank you.
And just so everyone knows, there is ample parking. There's also street parking. Even though it's restricted from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, it doesn't affect the daycare because they have enough parking to handle the daycare. And then when they start to do the, there is a slight transition between the dance studio and the daycare, but that's after 4:00 PM, so there should be no conflict for parking.
Do you have the outdoor play, or outdoor space that was required?
Yes. I don't know if I showed on the plans.
No, at least I don't see it on the ones that we have right now.
These are all, all regulations which we're going to go through. There's enough space there that we can have the playground. And we're going to go through the, the.
Can you just speak in the mic for our?
We got to go through the, we had to go through the Office of Child and Family Service on this application anyway. So whatever they require, I'm pretty sure that we have enough space though. If you look at the, the plans here, there's enough room that we could put the playground area there.
You do have to comply with the resolution that was passed. So with the square footage of the playground? Ms. Chairman, what was that, 600?
600 square feet. We'll probably be requiring that on the site plan. So in the resolution, there'll be a subject to, the, the final site plan showing the play area.
Sure.
Okay.
And the license, do you already have that?
No, I can't, I can't apply for my application until I get a CO.
Then it'll also be subject to then? Any other comments from the board? Ms. Witt?
So I noticed on your plan for the parking, you were mentioning about a handicap ramp, but I don't see any handicap spaces. Are there spaces already existing that are just not on the plan?
They're all existing spaces there. We could, we could provide the handicap parking lot.
Thank you.
Darren, any comments?
No, we've been in communication. Anything they may or may not need when they, when they start down this path, they've been talking to me and we'll make sure it all in compliance.
Walt, any concerns?
Anything else, board members? Okay, I'm going to go back to the public one more time. Anybody here wishing to address this application, please step forward. Going to close the public hearing and go back to the board one more time. Comments, questions, or concerns? Okay. On the resolution for AMP Rentals Inc., 74 to 82 Irwin Avenue, childcare facility. I'm going to put the subject twos in, in the very beginning of the insula, uh, resolution. You'll produce your license in the State of New York. It will also provide a revised site plan, making sure you cover all of the parking requirements for ADA and for the 600 square feet play area. Okay? That must be submitted before you'll get your CO. All right. And subject two to City of Middletown DPW, City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architecture engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. As with the other applicants, if you don't do anything in the next six months, you'll have to come back to us to extend your approval. Also, anything submitted within this application will become part of the resolution and part of the act that takes place here. There's no need to waive parking. It's not a DMU. They have parking, the resolution. And did I forget any of the subjects twos? Are we okay?
Yes, sir.
And as, as per the Common Council?
Did you list the hours?
I did not. I just, it just stated that whatever was submitted in the application, but I will correct that because it was caught that it was 6:15 AM to 6:00 PM for the daycare.
6:50 AM.
6:50, five zero.
Correct.
Sorry. And I have the dance studio as four to eight, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that hasn't changed. That's the same.
Correct.
All right. So as per the application, with that one change. All right. I need a motion. Mr. Brito, I need a second. Mr. Madden, discussion?
I should have also mentioned that as a board member, this property is bordering the school district, so that would be a second reason why I couldn't vote on this.
Okay. It'll be so noted on the vote that you have recused yourself. All right? Public hearing closed, that's right. Moving on. Okay, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston has recused herself. Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Just have to get the rest of your stuff together, okay? Thank you. Next on our agenda is 18 Dulson Avenue, deli convenience store including tobacco sale. What are you doing this evening, sir?
Good evening, everybody. How's everyone feeling today?
What's your name, sir?
My name is Mayor Jamal.
And state your intent.
My intent is to open the business. You know, that's the goal. We plan on selling tobacco products, obviously. We intend on selling vape products. We intend on selling, you know, drinks and some chips to go as well. This is any common convenience store.
All right, Ms. Tu, we have the mailings. You have anybody online or on the phone? That was a long time ago. Nothing in writing. Thank you very much. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present here wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay, I'm going to go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
This is an expansion of an existing use already, right? You already have the deli and the convenience?
We're not, we're not going to do the deli. We got, we have the convenience. It's going to be like a small convenience.
So small convenience that's already existing? And to that, you're adding the smoke shop?
Yeah, the smoke shop.
No deli then?
No deli at all, yeah.
Okay. And just for the record, I want to read into the record so that the, so that the Planning Board knows.
And the applicant.
And the applicant, of course. It's from the Common Council, City of Middletown. Adopted May 16, 2023. Resolution amending the city code to create a new Section 475-28A prohibiting cannabis sales in the city. Whereas by local law number one of the year 2021, adopted by, adopted July 20, 2021, the City of Middletown opted out of the establishment of cannabis retail dispensary licenses within the City of Middletown pursuant to Section 131 of the New York Cannabis Law. Now, therefore, be it resolved and be ordained by the City Common Council of the City of Middletown, New York as follows. Section 1, the Code of the City of Middletown, New York, Chapter 475, zoning be and is hereby amended by creating a new Section 475-28A of Article 4, General Regulations, to read as follows. Section 475-28A, cannabis sales. Number one, the sale of cannabis, cannabinoids, cannabinoid hemp cannabis, flower cannabis products, cannabis infused products, hemp and hemp extract, as those termed are dirt, are those terms are defined in the Section 3 of the New York Cannabis Law, is prohibited in and on all private and public property in every zoning district in the City of Middletown. Sorry, my apologies. Penalties. Number two, penalties. Any person who violates any of the provision of this section or any person who owns or controls property upon which violations occur shall, upon conviction, be guilty of an offense punishable by a fine of not less than 250 nor more than $2,000 or imprisonment for a period of not exceeding 15 days or by such fine and imprisonment. Each day that the violation is permitted to exist shall constitute a separate offense. The term person, as used in this section, shall include the owner, property manager as defined in Chapter 296 of the city code, occupant, mortgagee, vendee in possession, assignee of rents, receiver, executor, trustee, leasie, agent, and or other person, firm or corporation directly or indirectly in control of a premise or part thereof. Section 2, severability. If the provision of any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, or clause of this ordinance shall be judged invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such order of judgment shall not affect or invalidate the remainder of any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, or clause of this ordinance. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect immediately. Okay, we just read that in because smoke shops are not cannabis dispensaries. That's not how it works. No way, no how, no part. Would you want to make it very clear to you and the public?
Yes, I have seen that letter, and we will not sell any cannabis products in the store.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. The public hearing. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board?
Hours of operation?
Hours of operation, they may beg to differ. Right now, we're going to start from 10, 10 AM to 10:00 PM. But as business progresses, we may change the hours to 8:00 to 12:00 AM.
Okay, is that going to be daily, Monday through Sunday?
Yes.
Okay, well, if, if you had planned to expand your hours now, I'm sorry, did you ask?
I was going to say the same thing as you. I'll let you do it.
If you plan on extending your hours, now would be the time to decide.
All right.
Or else you'll end up coming back to us or be in violation.
We will be open soon from 8:00 to 12:00, 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Daily.
Daily, yeah, Monday through Sunday, yeah. 8:00 AM, 12:00 AM, better known as midnight. So we're clear. Okay. This person already has parking. This is, yeah, it's an extension of an existing use, basically. The gentleman just had to add tobacco sales to it.
Darren, any concerns?
Are you a smoke shop or a convenience store?
A smoke shop.
So you're a smoke shop. So can we be clear on that? It's a smoke shop?
But, but it will be like a small convenience. We will have, as I said, we will have chips, drinks, ice cream, milk, eggs.
We need to know why you're asking that question.
Well, because we know, we know, we need to know the use of the building.
Okay.
Need to know the use for future. So when, when they leave, is it going to be a convenience store or a smoke shop? If somebody else wants to come in there. Obviously, if they want to put a barber shop in there, they have to come back to us. So, and I know that we had issues in the past with dual use. So I want to just be clear that it's a smoke shop or a convenience store. Because we had issues there, and that's why they're here now.
Correct.
Darren, I think they can be both, with the smoke shop being the accessory use to the convenience, because it's under one ownership.
I think it's going to be the, the other way around.
Okay.
I think it's going to be a smoke shop that sells sodas and candy bars.
But we do have grocery items such as eggs and milk.
Yeah, okay, well.
And ice cream as well.
Since the existing use is convenience already, let's just keep it as the convenience with the accessory of the smoke.
I just want to make sure the board is aware of what's going on.
Okay.
Understood.
And who is the owner of the business?
I am the owner of the business.
You are the owner of the business. You're going to be the listed owner of the business.
Yes.
So you're going to contact me tomorrow and fill out your business permit?
Hopefully.
Yes, okay.
Well, in order for you to proceed, you have to get in touch with Darren.
I will.
Okay.
If we could exchange information soon.
Yep, absolutely.
If you have a card you could give me, that'll be great.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's all I have.
But I also just want to add, like, the business will be a smoke shop, but it's also a convenience. As you see, most stores around the area or in the county carry both grocery items and smoke shop items.
That's okay. You are a convenience store with added tobacco sales. That's perfectly okay.
But we will have, like, stuff as tobacco accessories, such as we may sell, like, tobacco pipes or tobacco bongs or hookah products, which also contain tobaccos or such as hookahs. We will contain stuff like that.
That's fine, as long as you're not in violation of the cannabis law.
Wanted to clarify.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Houston.
Um, have there been any noise ordinance violations to anybody's, like, I just, because Mr. Higbee was mentioning to me that, that hours of operation, it's, although it's Dulson Avenue, it is near some residential, so we just want to make sure we have all the facts before we vote on it.
We have no, nothing of record.
Well, I can ask Mr. Jamal, you haven't had any noise ordinance violations?
We had no violations, no issues with anyone. We know both neighbors.
Okay.
Surrounding the property, great people, we're all on good terms.
Okay.
And that's up to the police to enforce?
Absolutely, but it, it would influence our, our vote possibly if there had been, because part of what we look at is quality of life for everybody. What's in the best interest of Middletown?
Just, just to add that, the neighbors in the area, for example, the property, the neighbors to the left and to the right both support the business. They're both looking forward for the business to reopen. We've had nothing but compliments and motivation from our surrounding citizens.
That's what we like, that's what we like to hear.
We're just waiting for the approval.
Thank you. Like to hear that people are good neighbors. Thanks.
It's Middletown, you know.
Okay. Reasonable question. Anybody else? Close the public hearing. Board, any more questions?
Does the existing convenience store have alcohol sales?
No alcohol.
Thank you.
It'll be, it'll be a smoke shop and a convenience. So we'll have.
They have no proof of our alcohol.
Ice cream. We'll also have a smoke shop, obviously.
I just have a quick question. On your plan here, is the back part of where the, where your store is, is that a private residence? Because I see it says a living room and like a garden and everything, so.
No, the store, it's just a store, and there is a backyard to the store, but there is no back entrance to the backyard of the store, but there is.
Is that a private, is that a private?
No, that's included with the store as well.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. On the resolution. For the record, 18 Dul, 18 Dulson Avenue, convenience store including tobacco sales. Hours of operation will be Monday through Hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday, 8 a.m. to 12 a.m., midnight. Anything supplied within our application will become part of the record. The cannabis, new cannabis resolution within the City of Middletown also becomes part of the record. And will be subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require any bulk requirement tables, the applicant shall, will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Also, if there's any licenses that need to be provided through the State of New York, you will have to provide those. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Understood?
Understood.
Thank you. Parking is adequate, and I need a motion. Ms. Houston, I need a second. Mr. Brito? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much. Good luck.
I just want to clarify with the tobacco, that includes vapes, bongs, hookahs, tobacco products and stuff used to help...
As long as it's the sale of tobacco products related there too. Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hopefully everyone has a good day. Thank you. If you haven't, all right, thank you very much.
That concludes our agenda for this evening. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Brito? Mr. Madden? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.